All right, thank you everyone for coming to the meeting tonight of March 9th. And we have to call to order. And first thing on the agenda is election of board officers.
I nominate Mike Clapton as board chair. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The next one would be the clerk of the board. Is there a motion for a nomination?
I nominate Bob Bixby.
Second that one.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yeah, me.
And our admin clerk is hired position, so it's Katie Rock over there.
All right, is there any agenda additions or deletions? Yes?
Could I just suggest maybe you have Tyler this up because he's got a long ways to travel tonight. Maybe you could put him up further in the agenda.
He's under the bottom of new business. Right, he's way down there.
Is there any board members that would be opposed to that suggestion?
No, find him in.
All right, and I think what we'll do is after we approve the minutes, then we'll see if he wants to get right in line there. Any other agenda additions or deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the policy workshop minutes approval for February 24th, I would entertain a motion.
I'd move we accept them as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, on a February 24th regular meeting minutes, is there any, I would entertain a motion for corrections or deletions?
I looked them over and I thought they looked pretty good. I'd make the motion to accept them.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any corrections? Anybody say?
I didn't see any corrections.
I didn't see nothing.
The word motion was motioned in one section down there. Yeah, yeah, other than that, it was the vine. There's just one. It was in paragraph four, was it?
Yeah.
I think that's one. Yeah, somewhere in there. But it was the only one I found.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we could discuss that.
Sure.
Thanks, I appreciate your being here. I was here last May and I appreciate your great time to me again. My name is Tom Garden. My company is Clarendon Partners and I've been involved in developing solar projects in Vermont since 2009. And I am here tonight to ask that, like we did last May, that you support a location that's located on Route 7B. And I believe you all have information about where the location is. The tax map handout, it's another thing that I need to tell you a lot more about this whole process. So just about five years ago, the state passed a law saying that if somebody wanted to put solar project on green field, if you will, then the town should have a say in the process, which they had in heads before that time. This is to say that I have to come to you first to say, do you have any objections before I start the actual permitting process? The town has the right to, you know, oppose it, support it in any way they want during the entire permitting process. But before I can even start, I need to know that you don't have any objections and that I've come to you and said, given you as much information as I can, but more importantly, pointed out that I won't have any impact on aesthetics or any wetlands or any environmental features and things of that nature. So some of the handouts I provided showed where the three acres, three acre ray would be siting. And I believe one of those also showed that there are no wetland impacts, there's no deer, deer wintering area impacts or anything of that nature because I know better than to do that because the state just will never give me my permit. I developed a project on adjacent property owned by Crushed Rock several years ago. GE Aviation is the net meter credit off taker for that project. This project would be the same size. You're occupying about three acres of a 50 acre site. And we don't know yet who the off taker will be, but hopefully it'll be somebody else like GE Aviation in this area because essentially what this program does is allows the off taker to save money on electricity. And I think it's important to some of the primary employers in this region that they have opportunities to save money any way they can. And that's why I'm really like doing these projects. The first step of this project, of this process of what we call a preferred site letter is that I need to get the planning commission, the select board, and then the regional planning commission, who I'm meeting with next Tuesday night, to sign a letter that says they have no objections to the project at this time as planned. It doesn't mean that any party can't step in later on and say, have you changed that? Or you didn't tell us about that? Or hey, the neighbors don't really like it now? They're different individuals. You're always going to have the ability, just to be part of the permitting process. I think that's important. The other thing is that we've carefully planned the sighting of this project to be, number one, further away from Route 7B than it has to be legally. So it just minimizes the impact from a view standpoint. That also maintains the fact that we will be far enough away from any residential structures that there'll never be any noise impact. It's virtually silent and quiet and go to bed at night anyways. But, and we will be doing little, if any, tree cutting. So all along 7B, we'll be maintaining a nicely heavy tree buffer from any cars passing by or neighbors that are directly across the street. I've spoken with the immediate buttered, who owns the land, John Russell, and John has told me he has no objection to having this on the adjacent property. Of course, he has, the other project that's in on his property, so I don't think it was a...
There's an established power line there, right?
There's a, there's a, let me face power right on Route 7.
Right, and the power line to this would be to the same one as Russell has?
Yes, yes. I'll take, I'll take a separate spur off of the, off of that power line. I can't take it off the one that goes to John's.
Okay.
I'd save a lot of money if I could, but I can't do that.
Can we ask questions?
Go ahead.
Chairman?
Go ahead.
Okay, you have to grant permission.
Well, you interrupt all the time anyway. Go ahead.
Where exactly is this on Route 7B?
I can show you that.
Here.
So, yeah, just north of the Yabond.
Okay, so the Yabond's there.
Let's do this one, that's Route 7. So this is Route 7B going south. This is the, Yabond's right there.
Okay.
John Russell owns this land.
Oh, okay.
There's a Velco easement right across there.
Yeah.
And it's going to be located in the front of this parcel here. And I can show you maybe the aerial, you'll be able to see that a little better.
Okay, so that fucks up to your property?
Well, it's my sister's property. It's ours. It's our farm.
Yes. So here's the Yabond right here.
Yep.
Is, this is...
And it's, oh, it's right here. This is an existing one here?
Yes. So this is a little larger than it actually will be when it's done at the end of the day. But this is a maintained field.
Yeah.
And this is a three, this is a subtransmission line.
Okay, 38 KV.
Probably, yeah, 48 KV.
Okay, thank you. Now, you talked about a preferred site?
Well, what, the Public Utilities Commission just calls it a preferred site letter as a sort of, a label.
So if the board approves it, then it's a preferred site?
It's essentially the board saying, and the regional planning commission and the local planning commission saying to PUC, at this point in time, we have no objections to this, to this location being a solar facility.
Okay.
But subject to, they're getting and going through the very rigid certificate of public good process.
But does preferred site have meaning in, under statute?
No, it just means that if a town in Vermont has not established its own preferred locations for solar by doing, you know, a lot of planning studies and things of that nature, then this sort of takes the...
Oh, I see.
Some cities have gone through that process.
De facto.
Which I believe Alf, if my memory serves me right, the last time our town planned was updated, we updated preferred sighting anyway, I think.
Yes.
Did we define them?
I believe so. I think it's in...
Is this one of them?
It's now, it's now in, I think it's, it's in our town plan, which the, which the planning commission has signed off, so it obviously...
So this site is...
So it obviously fit the planning commission's definition.
And because, excuse me, John Russell built his right there. That's when this all got started, so that's when we updated policy in coordination with the planning commission.
Because I believe our preferred sighting, if my memory serves me right, we took out, like, primag land couldn't, wasn't considered prefer, like, it was, it was property that was not considered prime usable for other things, was what my memory served me.
Well, a lot of the writing of it came from the regional planning commission.
And then it was tweaked by us.
Right.
I believe.
How many KV?
500.
Oh, 500.
500. So it's, it's usually just under three acres of land required.
Okay, now, we had something, there's something in the plan that if it's over 150, then there's restrictions that apply? I mean, I'm not at, I'm not in favor of that.
There are state's restrictions. How far back? It has to be from the road and things of that nature.
Well, there said something about line of sight, if it's somebody, if the neighbors can see it, then there's all kinds of garbage you've got to go through.
That's, that's what I do. That's what I do.
I think if it was over 150, then they had to put up something to decommission it.
Well, my, the process that I go through with a certificate of public good is I have to do studies. Usually I have to do archaeological studies. I have to, you know, it becomes a very expensive process.
Yeah, and I'm not advocating the way the plan was put together relative to solar because I don't believe all of that was appropriate. But if it's in effect, then you've got to comply with it. And, I mean, just because the public service board says fine, they're not indicating any compliance or non-compliance with our plan.
That's why we wanted the planning commission...
And that's why the planning commission signed off first.
That's how we, the last time, if you recall, you came here first and we said, well, go to the planning commission.
Okay, go to the planning commission.
Because we updated a lot of our policy.
So it goes through them first, which it went through them...
I thought, I thought you said the next step was to go to the planning commission.
Regional planning commission is already signed off.
Right.
I'll come with that and, you know, provided I get the voting signed off tonight.
Yeah.
Then I go to, I'm meeting with the regional planning commission.
Oh, the regional planning.
Three, three steps. Our planning commission first, then here, then it goes up there.
Three steps I never used to have to take before. I used to just, just go through the planning process.
What part did you have?
I just want to know where the money comes from for this. Who pays for this? Who, who is, where's the money come from to build these fields?
I pay for it.
The entire thing?
It takes 20 years to amortize the loan for this project.
And what do you get out of it?
I get about, about a 5 to 10% return.
On the electricity produced?
No, on return on my investment. It's a long-term, not a, not a get rich quick screen by anybody's imagination.
I didn't care as much about that as how the, where the money... So the state or the taxpayer's not paying for it?
No, 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 no. No, this is called, this is called community net, communities net metering, where I bring in, you know, companies or schools or municipalities to be, to get credit for that green energy. They save money on their electricity. And by virtue of that, I get income that allows me to pay taxes, pay to lease the land, pay to amortize all the improvements.
The tax credits that you're talking about are going to the businesses that are buying it.
Right, and for instance, GE, I believe it was GE when they did Pankowski's.
Yes.
They benefited by it.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's how it works.
And the other question I have is what gets in the agreement, what happens to the field when it reaches its life potential and is done?
So...
Is there a requirement for you or someone to go back in or restore that field back the way it was?
There is. I'm obligated to go back and restore the field to its as-is condition, even to the point of if I'm going to do any trenching, which the wires go underground, I need to stockpile those soils, protect those soils.
Okay.
And put those soils back in the same layers that I removed them. It's pretty stringent. And it's gotten more stringent as years have gone by and people have said, you know, we don't want those things, you know, there forever.
Right, oh, yeah.
So there's a lot of requirements on the developer. And I think, you know, but I will say this, I think having been in business now since 2009 doing this, establishing a reputation is kind of one of the good guys. I, I'm kind of proud to say that.
Did you, did you build the one on 103 and 7?
No, I did not. No, that was a company out of Philadelphia.
Good thing you said no. Good.
Is the requirement relative to decommissioning this in effect, is that per statute?
Yes.
Or is that per your obligation?
No, it's, it's per statute. Per, per my permit.
Okay, and that would be spelt out in the permit?
It's spelled out in the...
So the town could have that on file?
Yes.
So they know who to go after to do it?
Yeah, and every step of this process, I have to notify the town. Whenever I make any kind of significant, um, report or anything that goes into the state, the town gets copy. All the neighbors get copy. I'll be joining in on it. So it's very, it's very open for us.
Now, just to play devil's advocate, is it, is it you personally responsible or is it your company?
It's my company.
Yeah, so your company...
My name on the company. So I call myself personally responsible.
But is that a corporation or an LLC?
It's an LLC.
Okay, so, I mean, it could disappear and then who would have it? Who would have the responsibility?
Well, you know what? Ask Dan Pankowski. Ask John Russell.
I don't think there's been any decommissioning of solar.
No, but I think those, those people have trusted me that we're going to do this right.
And I'm not saying that's something you would do, but I mean, that's to protect, you know, our situation.
Yeah, right.
Would, would you be willing to guarantee it personally?
No.
For this?
I don't guarantee anything personally.
Okay. Well, there you go.
Just so you know, just so everybody, because they may as well ask because...
What's that?
That's come back to bite me in the ass, frankly. So I know better than to do that at this age, at this stage in my life. But I will say this, we, we write a lease for 25 years and we believe these solar, if anybody, if everybody's in agreement, they could still be there and operating 40 years later. The technology, the workmanship, they will still be generating a lot of electricity in 40 years.
The same panel?
The same panels, exact same panels. Yeah, the technology is...
You mentioned you would tie into the mine on Route 7B from your site to 7B. Will that be underground or overhead?
That will be overhead.
Overhead, just like the one that's there on the Russell?
Yeah, the one on Russell, I went underground where I had to go under the GMP easement for the subtransmission line. Yeah, yeah. And that was a requirement there. And then we go underground, once we get from the first pole, we have to go over to our, our switchgear underground.
Mr. Chairman, seeing that the planning commission has signed off, I would go ahead and make the motion that we approve and authorize you to sign this letter of agreement on behalf of the Clarendon Select Board.
Second further discussion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? And I will ask one more time, is there anyone out there that has a question?
Just one, one quick question. Probably Marge can answer it quicker than anyone. This, as I'm looking at this map, that's kind of over the top of the knoll just a little, isn't it? Yeah.
Mm-hmm, that's why it's...
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If anyone opposed? All right, I'll sign this one here.
Michael, if you don't mind, this is the original.
Ah, okay, that's even better yet.
Great.
The power line's going to be overhead or underground?
It's going to be overhead.
Overhead.
If you want, you want to keep that one, you can sign that, you can keep that for the town's records.
Yeah, I'll do that. Right, that's what I was looking for.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right. And when, when you go, after, after you do the planning commission or the regional, I'd like to have a copy just for our record. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just from my two cents, I'm glad to see you guys supporting the work. Sounded like for a while you guys were against it.
Well, no.
Just the one on 7 and 7.
Well, yeah, that was ugly.
We wanted some things fine-tuned, which I think happened.
Yes.
Because there were some, we did get some pushback on some different things that were some problems, I think.
Were supposed to happen that didn't happen.
But I think now, and especially now that there's more, with some of the changes at the state level, that's given more local input has been a good thing.
Yep. All right. Hey, you can have some real stick laws, I was wondering where they could put theirs.
All right.
Not our plan.
What do you have for us, Cass?
Over the hill. I mean, it was crazy restrictive.
I've been working on potholes on the tire roads, top dressing, the dirt roads with potholes and whatnot. Woods gravel. It's, these rain events and it's the same old story over and over again, but with the rain events and thorn and freezing, it's raving havoc with our roads and stuff. Just before I got here, I got to receive the phone call from our fire chief of Clarendon. He just had a brush fire up on East Clarendon Road. And I got to go check that out, but I guess it burnt up into one of our plastic culverts, so that goes across the road. So with that being said, the grass and the forest seems to be dry.
Wow.
And, um...
Middle towns got to go into...
This is early for this, you know, for something like this in the season. So I just want to beware and people pay attention where they're, if they smoke, where they throw their cigarette butts or stuff like that, and open fires if they have any, which you shouldn't have. But I thought I'd just pass that along.
Anything else, Cass?
That's about all I have right now.
All right, anybody have any questions for the road commissioner? All right, moving right along.
Oh, there was, yeah, there was something regarding a grant for that culvert up on River Road, Gorge Road.
Gorge Road, that's done.
Did we get that?
We did not. We checked into that and that would push that grant, if we did that, that would push that, if we did receive the grant, into this late summer before it get fixed. That project there, we discussed it, looked it over, and for the price of the project, it is $14,000, but we got other, another bridge that we're working on getting replaced and going for, it's a much higher grant.
So it would have been...
And I haven't got, we're looking at, this other bridge, we're looking at around $200,000.
So it would have been one or the other?
It could have been one or the other, but...
Both?
I'm looking at the logistics of time and with our legislative taxpayer cutting back, I don't see down the road that they're going to be totally supporting these grants at the limit that they're supporting them at right at this, now, down the road with all the cutbacks. I, hopefully, I'm wrong. So that's why we're going after the bigger project, which is on the Creek Road. And we're looking at that, like I said, that project there is like $200,000 roughly. That's just a rough estimate. This project here was $14,000. So...
And you want to report what shape it's in right now?
It, it just got done, completed. They come right in and did it.
The culvert?
The culvert. It's all been replaced. I have pictures that I'm going to forward to Katie Administrative to put in the files. They, I was up there, they worked at it, they ran into ledge, they ran a lot of frost. They did a nice job with the project.
Oh, they do good work, yeah. No question about that.
Markowski's did it.
Yeah.
Um, as far as the other part of the gorge road where the airport discharged water washed out part of our road, that just got completed when they were doing the culvert project. Markowski's did that on the state side of funding, not the town taxpayers. So, and they got more work to do up there in their airport side to complete that.
So technically, we're leaving that road closed until all work is finished today?
Now, that road's going to stay closed until Mother Nature permits it to dry out because it's a mud hole up in here now because it hasn't been used all winter.
Yeah.
And it's frozen. That's all I have.
Nice work. Jan, it looks like your turn.
What's up?
Well, first I want to thank you guys for moving that sign last year that we asked for across from Taylor's house to where all the logging was done and all the nature trails are back there. That sign you guys moved, you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, in the, in the town forest, you're referring to.
Yeah, 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 and the big rocks there, it looks great. And the cold, the road that Eva was talking about, it's a great road. I love it closed because it's great for riding bikes.
Yeah.
So, should I read my little letter I wrote?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Jan McCoy. I've lived here for about 33 years. Many of you know me as a teacher for 29 years. In fact, I think I might have been some of your, I might have been your classroom teacher or at least I had some of your kids in my class. It came to our attention a couple weeks ago that the Select Board adopted the Second Amendment Sanctuary Town Resolution on the 27th. And I guess the, the resolution reflects the town where I live and where I pay taxes in the town that I really love. So I just feel like we, as me and other people, obviously had a, should have had a chance to discuss it before it was passed. So I just had a couple concerns that I wanted to bring up tonight and perhaps we could answer them. First, after, I watched the video from the, the meeting on the 27th and I know that it said that there was some discussion about it being voted on and it was stated that it was past the date to put it on the ballot. And so I was wondering, when was that date? And, and when, why was there such an urgency that night to pass it? The other thing that I found out in this past week is I went online and started Googling Second Amendment Sanctuary Towns. And I read through Wikipedia that, and I have it copied on that paper that I gave you guys. It's also known as a gun sanctuary, refers to state, counties, or localities in the United States that have adopted laws or resolutions to prohibit or impede the enforcement of certain gun control measures perceived as a violation of the Second Amendment, such as universal gun background checks, high-capacity magazine bans, assault weapon bans, and red flag laws. Now, that's Wikipedia. And when you go a little bit further on that page, there are links to towns that have adopted the resolution and our town of Clarendon is listed there. So you can click on Clarendon and it'll go right to our town website. So I got thinking about that and I thought, well, you know, anybody that might be looking to purchase a home in Clarendon might have a different outlook about it. Because I know lots of people, they do their homework these days when they're looking to buy a town and they may not, they might find that a Second Amendment Sanctuary Town is not where they might want to live. The last sentence on the resolution says, quote, "Furthermore, per Marvie versus Madison, township hereby declares all federal and state laws and regulations attempting to restrict these rights," that would be the Second Amendment or 16th Amendment in the Vermont Constitution, "to be infringements, hence null and void under this resolution." So to me, that sort of implies that our town is not going to enforce federal and state laws, so I was wondering if that is true. So also I did, also did some research on Chittenden. They also met on the same night, on the 27th, and they actually were able to put it on their town ballot. So my request is that we either, maybe we could rescind it. I don't think that's gonna happen, but if we could maybe have a town vote on the resolution. Thank you.
March, Jan.
Can I just say, um, where she got in WikiLeaks and it says, uh, universal gun background checks, that's happening today. You, you can't buy a gun without a background check today.
Right.
So when they're saying this will, this Second Amendment Sanctuary would take that away, it's not going to. It's in law today.
Right. Yes, I know.
So some of these things that WikiLeaks has got up there that this sanctuary would take away will not. It's, it's already implemented.
This was a non-binding resolution.
I understand.
By the select board.
Right.
And the, our town cannot, if the state government or the federal government create a law, we can't.
I understand that. And at first I thought, well, since it's non-binding, what difference does it make? But then when I started researching it, I, that's when I started thinking that as a homeowner, I don't, I personally didn't want the town of Clarendon associated with it. That's just my own personal opinion. I'm not against or for Second Amendment rights or anything like that. That's not my, my beef right now. It's the fact that the town, the town's people didn't get a chance to vote on it.
What were your first two questions when you said it was the urgency of it? And I guess why wasn't it able to be put on the ballot?
Right.
Okay. Maybe they could address that first.
The, one was, uh, let me ask Heidi for a date. When was the, um, our budget and everything went to the printer and all that? When was the ending date on that?
Our ballot for the town of Clarendon was finalized by the select board at the previous meeting. And so any other questions regarding that though? I'll refer to our town.
I didn't see Gloria sitting behind the, behind the screen. We can't see you, Gloria.
So if it's not submitted by then, there's no way anything could be on, I mean, there can't be a separate ballot? Put there. Have been.
They, they approved the, uh, the warning on the 13th. They had until, they had to post it by February 2nd. I know that was the last day to post it, to post it, but they.
What was the date of this meeting?
The 27th, January 27th.
So it was like two or, it was two or three days before then? Yeah, okay.
It was two or three days before the deadline?
Is that, is that a Vermont thing or is that just our?
A Vermont statute.
Well, then how come Chittenden was able to do it?
They, I don't know if they could have called a special meeting.
They met the same, they met on the 27th.
Yep.
And it was on their ballot.
So I, I mean, technically we could have done it because you had until February 2nd to get everything.
Right, but there was no objection, number one. We did it in a public forum. It wasn't, you know, behind locked doors somewhere. And the other thing with, with Chittenden, um, you know, their schedules may be a little bit different than our schedule. I don't know what days they meet and everything, so that certainly, you know.
I know, I guess, I guess gave it as an example.
Okay, but in the same token though, if you were using that example, what was the final vote?
Well, that's, that's irrelevant because I don't, I don't really care what their vote was. I'm just saying we as a community didn't get a chance to vote on it.
Or have a discussion on it.
Right.
Yeah, I think we did.
You had it at one.
Because we elected these people as selection and that's the vote. If we, if we take every law and everything and, and put our finger in the air and, and, you know, have a vote, we'll never get anything done.
Well, let me, let me just challenge that a second.
That night, Mr. Rurain was not there and I believe after watching the video that, Mike, you, you had some concerns. I thought you did. You did.
I don't remember that, but.
Well, you watch it and you, you.
One of my, my biggest concern was, um, I had some questions as to whether or not, I being a gun owner.
Right.
I believe that this is the correct thing for our town because, uh, in my personal opinion, I don't see why, I think I said this at the town meeting too. I don't see, um, if we create something that's binding, then yes, I understand where you're coming from, but this is a non-binding resolution.
I understand it is, but the implications are that it's right now, it's out on the worldwide web.
Mm-hmm.
And that bothers me. As a taxpayer, as a homeowner, that bothers me.
Well, I, I'm not sure, you, you have the right to, yes, come and express your opinion. You also have the right to petition town voters to put that on, our next, next elections would be in November, presidential. Pardon?
That's a federal, that has to be a town.
It'll be a merge.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a Gloria question. So does it have to be next March? It would, okay. Cause we've got two more elections this year, but neither of them, neither of them are local, right? Cause it has to be a local election.
But they can petition for then a special election. I would say, could you look that up, Gloria? I don't.
I will. A special vote? For non-binding article, you want to have, yeah, it's a lot of money to.
Special elections.
I will look into it. I will get back to you tomorrow.
All right.
My next one.
But now, now, as I understand it, um, so there must have been discussion of this article or this resolution prior to the meeting that you had. I mean, was there?
No, that was the night we had that discussion, uh, some folks bought that in.
No, no, you said at that meeting that someone else had brought it to you prior to this, that meeting.
Not to, not to, not to this, not to the full board.
I think some of us have gotten phone calls and requests.
Yeah, but I don't, we had, see, I didn't, I'm saying, but when I said that, I'm talking about, a question was asked, what do I have to do if I want to bring a resolution? And I said, you have to bring it to the full board.
Yeah.
That was the only.
Yes, that's, that's.
Time I heard anything about it.
Yep.
And I was actually surprised that night when we came in here and it was, uh, put.
The first time I heard it.
Okay, well, the, the other thing that I have a qualm about is even at tonight's meeting, you say, are there any additions to the agenda? I mean, the, the agenda has got to be warned or identified and posted 48 hours before the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, in the guide for select board, the select board guide from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns says, you gotta be very careful about, and legally you're allowed to, but you gotta be very careful about adding items to the agenda that have not been posted so folks can be aware of it. So that it's not perceived that the select board is trying to circumvent or go around and prevent public discussion on an item. And so you should very carefully and very restrictively use this, uh, request about adding to the agenda. Subtracting from it is probably not an issue, but I mean, as.
And that, just so you know Alf, cause when I first came on the board, that was not an option. You couldn't do that.
Right.
And it was probably two years into my first term.
When the open meeting was.
When they, when the, the state rolled out the new open meeting law, they were the ones that set, that's a, that's based on a state statute.
Yeah, but there's also guidance in there that select boards, you know, be very careful about using this addition to the agenda in an unposted situation.
Let me say this. It has been our, um, what, what we consider duty. If we have something after the regular meeting agenda is posted and all of a sudden something on Monday morning comes in and says, oh, this has to be acted upon, this is how we go about it. We don't want to give Robbie a call or Rick a call, say, you know, we want to, what we do is in open meeting, and we are very careful if there's some things that can carry on to a, a next meeting.
There's a number of things that just get, without a whole lot of discussion gets added on to the agenda. I mean, you modify it and I, maybe you should, I mean, I'd like to hear you say, you know, unless it's absolutely an emergency situation, we're not gonna be adding in. Otherwise, you're not being as transparent as you should be.
Okay, then let me, let me, let me suggest this then. If that were the case, then you would not have been able to get onto this.
She's on the agenda.
I, I'm on the agenda.
She's on the agenda.
And that's because I, I called and I, I asked to be on it, yeah.
Yeah, right, but we have protocol to get officially on the agenda.
You're right.
Written permission and all this stuff. You know this Alf, Alf, I'm sitting in.
Well, there's, there's, on the website, there's the process and everybody should go through it. The process about getting on the agenda.
But, but what I'll, what I'll say too is Alf, I, I hear what you're saying and for one, as, as one person sitting back here, I, I 100% hear what you're saying and I respect what you're saying and I, I as one member will try to be better about that because you're right, there have been times where something comes in at the beginning of the meeting and it gets added. And it's, and what I hear you saying is if it's not something that absolutely has to be done that night, because we, we do sometimes get that. We sometimes get stuff that comes in that's gotta be acted on.
I think a lot of things are being added on just for the convenience to the folks that want it on the.
But I agree, if we can, if we can take it and add it to the next agenda, I, I respect that and I 100% hear you and I will do my best to be better.
Other issue.
This meeting, then we will make that commitment that if it's something that is not necessarily have to be done at this meeting, then we will put it to the following or next meeting.
And it should not be just for the convenience of the folks seeking the agenda item.
Sure.
Cause it's very clearly posted as.
March, you have.
Well, a lot of times we'll come in with issues and public comment will open it right up.
Sure, that happens too. That does happen too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that's an avenue for somebody and you didn't add it to the, to the agenda.
Agenda.
But that's for the public.
Yeah.
And it wasn't the select board that added this, it was the public that wanted it.
Select board has the right to.
That is true.
You have the right to restrict discussion on that.
Sure.
Jan.
If it's not on the agenda. Just out of curiosity, did you ever think that this might have been a hot item that people might have wanted to talk about? I guess that's my thing. Why was it so urgent to pass it that night?
I, I can't answer that as far as.
I think because of the non-binding aspect of it.
I know, it doesn't matter.
That it wasn't a priority type situation.
I'm not asking about if it's non-binding, I'm saying why do you feel like you had to pass it that night instead of have it to a vote?
Or at least post it.
Yeah.
Rest our opinion about it and that was really what it was, was it's non-binding.
So you didn't.
But we also have as a board, without public, without public input to put in, um, what am I thinking of? Um, adding like to the speed limit stuff, those type of things. We could do those without having a, a town vote on that.
I agree with the main.
Something like that. This is similar to that in my opinion.
Oh, my God.
You can jam a lot of stuff down our throats if you want to. But do you want to be transparent and have discussion on items?
Yeah.
I mean, contrary to what Art said, oh, if we had discussions on it, then nothing would get passed. Well, I, I disagree wholeheartedly with that. I think if anything, things should be discussed transparent, get it out in the open if people got issues with it. Beat it around, hit it over the head a few times and then make your decision.
That's the best.
Can I just read what they said in the paper and I think it's true. It says the whole thing is kind of symbolic anyways. So I think that you know, getting the conversation going, which we're doing, is what we set out to do and it's been a success in that respect. So I think that's what it is. We're talking. I mean, you know, now if you want to put it on a ballot, get a petition, we'll put it on a ballot and the way you'll go with it.
Very good.
I mean, they can't take, everything they vote on, they can't take back out to the people. I mean, they can't ring everybody up and say, okay.
Oh, I know that. I agree with that.
There wouldn't be anything that's done in this town.
No, I came in with gift.
Hold on, go ahead.
It just seems to me this is qualitatively a very different kind of issue. It's not granting permission for a solar field. It is characterizing the entire town in an area of such controversy. This has been going for years as a controversy. My husband used to write letters to the board and to neighbors in Clarendon in the 1990s, as you know, Michael. So I think that it was a very big step that you took into, um, into heavy water. And I, I do think that it is a little bit different from some of the things that you deal with.
Well, I think in this discussion tonight, in my opinion, I think that, you know, you've, you've made some good points, Alf, you've made some good points about some of the, some of the bigger issues, maybe we should, uh, if something comes in like that, say, okay, we'll post it and have some public comment before we, and I think to Rob's point, I think that's, you know, something that we could do a better job on possibly, so we'll make that effort.
Table it for the next meeting.
Right.
Yeah, that's the, I mean, that would be the right protocol. Something comes in at the meeting and it doesn't have to be acted upon right that night, you table it and you, and put it, post it on the agenda for the next one and you would go ahead and, and going forward, I, I have no problems with that kind of becoming our, I don't know if you want to call it an unwritten policy or whatever, but I, I would agree with, and that was a good point by Alf, because how many times do we get, you know, and, and I think you're right. I, I'll be perfectly honest as a person sitting behind the table, that yes, sometimes it is stuff that comes in and it's partially out, if it's something for the roads or if it's a, a license that comes in for something that Gloria gets. We've added those before too and we've put them right on the agenda just because we want to deal with them and move on. And now sometimes those have to be dealt with because they're right up against the deadline and they get to us right at the end, like right when they have to be passed. But other, other times we get them in advance where they, I mean, Gloria would have to advise us, but they could be tabled probably to the next meeting. So if anybody wanted to come in and con, comment on them, we could allow that.
I think we danced that, danced with the marijuana ordinance. That was six months' process. Yes, Jan.
So the night of the 27th, did you know that they were coming with that petition?
That was the first I saw of it.
I had received a couple of calls and had told people that.
I received one phone call.
And.
But that was.
That's, that was something that just came in.
That was a question, what do we have to do to propose something like that or say, well, you'd have to get on the agenda. That was my comment back to the individual who questioned me. And that was the end of that. And we discussed how come the roads aren't being, there was a big issue by a ditch by the individual's house.
Can I just say in Montpelier, they don't come to the people of Vermont and say, we're not gonna, we're gonna pass this bill or not. They pass it. And that's what they're talking is restricting our Second Amendment rights.
Yeah.
That's what it's all about.
Yeah, can I?
I don't, I don't want to talk about Second Amendment rights. I'm talking about the way.
The process.
The process. And in the legislature, they have proposed rule or proposed law, they have the first reading, the second reading.
Right.
The third reading. It's all posted on the site for anybody that wants to see it. If you don't want to, then shame on you or don't scream about it.
But we may go up and comment. We have a comment period.
You have comments.
We do not have the voice of.
So it's all, I mean, it's out in the open if you want to.
Yes, I understand.
It takes a little effort to do it.
I think these people have brought it to their attention. I think they're gonna pay attention to you.
Yeah.
I will.
I think the process needs focus, you know.
And, and I personally would welcome, as, as one person, um, I, I have seen no issue if, if there is a, a group in town that wants to see this changed, um, raising a petition. I mean, that's, that's what that portion of your, your voice is. You have that ability and, and certainly, um, I have to tell you that since town meeting and since, um, this has gone through, I, I have received nothing but overwhelming support for what we did. I, I have to be honest. I mean, it's, it's phone calls, it's people I bump into in town and, and it's been overwhelming support. Um, but that's, that's me. I'm one person that sits on this board. So, um, that's, you know, again, the other part of the process, democracy is certainly raise that petition and, and let it go to a vote and let's see where the chips fall.
But one of the points to that is when somebody asked me about that, uh, what we did and thank you very much, kind of stuff, is a case of while we did that, it's not binding.
Yeah, and absolutely.
But you're sending the proper signal, I believe, to the legislature.
That's what.
That you're sending the right signal.
I think that was basically behind our decision.
But not everybody's gonna think the way I'm thinking.[1781.02] But not everybody's gonna think the way I'm thinking.
Well, sure, and that, and that's part of who we are and that's part of, that's part of.
Absolutely.
Part of it, that's part of America.
And I expect that's why.
We don't all agree.
I expect that's why you all have, have come here tonight because you want to do the same thing as the individual who proposed this.
So let me get this straight, so we need to start a petition, is there a number of signatures we need to have?
That, that would be a town clerk. So, so we.
But we can't vote on it until next March.
An opinion, a, a correct delineation, we do not, we approve the warning, just so you know, for like town meeting, we approve the warning, it comes through us, but all elections are run through the town clerk's office, so, so all election questions go to Gloria, she's the one who can answer that.
Gloria, what would it cost if you, an estimate for a special election?
I can't think of a specific.
Yeah, if you could.
The, the, so as one person, I'm not.
And I'm not saying that's.
And I'm not throwing this out to poo-poo that idea, but traditionally, special elections and are, are expensive, but you are not gonna get the turnout of.
Right.
An election like a town meeting day where you're gonna get a true pulse of the town.
Exactly.
That's.
I'll ask if we could do it November, because, you know, it's worth an ask.
It's worth an ask, I mean, because i- if you wanna, if you wanna get a true pulse because our, our numbers will be up, our numbers are always up on presidential elections, so.
So you said there's a certain number of people that have to sign the petition?
It's a percentage of our vote, registered voter.
It has to, yes, and it has to be registered voters.
Okay, so is there a certain amount of number of people that sign the petitions to have a resolution adopted?
Only to put on the, um, on the ballot.
Only for the ballot.
Right.
No, I'm talking about what.
For us, no.
The resolution that you got, how many people signed it?
That was, it was just a group of citizens that brought it to us.
You don't know how many?
I mean, I, I know that it was a, it was a large, there was, let's put it this way, when it was brought to me, there was a group of them that were behind it. I don't know the exact number, I can't, I can't speak to that.
So it's at your discretion whether you want it.
Correct, so a resolution before the board i- is different than if you're trying to get on a ballot. If you're gonna get on a ballot, you have to obviously adhere to the state guidelines, um, whatever the percent, whatever percentage Gloria finds out it is.
Well, unless you decide that you want to put it on the ballot.
Yeah.
Right? Because that's what Chittenden did, they didn't have somebody petition, they just put it on.
Right.
That, your discretion if you wanted it on the ballot.
They decided amongst themselves rather than ask their voters to put it on.
Right, so you could do that, right?
So that's what we were doing, you'd have to wait till.
Trying to explain.
I think Gloria didn't, Gloria just explained that she was going to.
We have that right as a board.
That would be March though specifically, if, if a petition came forward and they say, yes Gloria, it could go on November, possibly.
Yeah.
Possibly.
That's what we want to find out.
If, if it's gonna go, if it's gonna go on November and they give that okay, it would have to be petitioned.
Okay, but if you want to do it in November, it has to have petition.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Clear as mo-
We, we should have that by next week, next meeting? Gloria, you think we would have that answer by next meeting?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'll have it by this week, they're really good again.
That is a good point, I wonder if it could go on the JP ballot?
Don't know.
I don't know.
What's the JP ballot? Justices of the peace, that gets voted in November.
That's a, that's a November vote.
And that's the town.
And that is local technically.
Okay.
All right, any other, Thomas?
How much would that cost if this is gonna be a special vote?
But.
One?
No.
It wouldn't be a special vote.
If it went on November, it wouldn't be special.
Right. Wouldn't cost.
You're paying it, that's a presidential election.
Cause there's already.
Who's paying for the printing?
Nobody's paying for it.
It would, it's, we are, but we're already printing ballots because we have to already print the justices of the peace.
That and in March, you would have to print it anyways.
Right, cause if nothing.
You're gonna print in November, you're gonna print in March.
In other words, because it's, because we're already printing, it really isn't adding something.
Yeah.
Now, if it was a separate printing.
I said lost.
It's, it gets expensive.
That's expensive.
When was the last special election in town Gloria, do you know?
Since I've been here.
I was gonna say, I.
A long time ago.
It's, it's been a long, long time, probably since the school budget went down or something that there was a special election.
Well, it was the town budget.
Two thousand dollars to have.
It was a town budget?
Town budget.
Town budget. I was gonna say between two and three thousand, wouldn't you bet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least what, ten to twelve years ago.
Before me.
I bet longer than that.
At least, you might be right, it might be a little longer, but at least ten to twelve.
I'm thinking like sixteen years, seventeen years.
Maybe.
Um, question that I.
I'm just really confused by this whole issue. I can see having an election with an up and down vote, but I don't know what you're thinking is, I don't know, I, I'm thinking we need a big public meeting to find out what are the implications of this. Um, are there any kind of laws that the state might pass or that the feds might pass that you would want to have us participate in? Are, are there any limitations that you would ever accept? I just, I don't know what other people are thinking and so for me to have it on the ballot, that's just not gonna help me a whole lot if it's, oh, yes or no. I, I'm, I guess what I'm thinking is that maybe we need to have a meeting where people like you, Rick or Michael could speak to your concern and Jan and others of us could ask questions when we're not being regulated by an agenda, we just, am I making this up?
Yeah, we'll just.
I just find that this is a very complicated issue.
What has happened lately, the last four or five years, all of a sudden things come down from the state house that, you know, it seems like our state representatives, both House and Senate, are not hearing what the smaller communities want. And I think in that thinking, for me, when this came about here at town relative to the gun rights thing and stuff, um, I want my representatives up there, the state house at least, to know, hey, you know, this is getting ridiculous with some of the stuff. Now, when you say school shootings and all these things, um, I understand that, I had children, I still have one child that's in school and I understand that concern. Uh, however, you know, there's the other side of that discussion where there's a hunter right back there or there's a, a person that likes to shoot ski and all these kind of things, that's taking away that individual's rights still.
But you've simplified it so by taking five or six of you to speak with a loud voice on a very difficult, complicated issue. And I think that's the basis, at least that's what I'm concerned about. And I would like very much to hear more from you, Michael, about your point of view. Rick, you and I had a very.
We had a very good discussion.
And this is maybe not the way to do it, but.
No.
Just basically.
Public forum would be an idea if, if it could be set up, pick a spot.
I just, I think maybe that's what we should try.
You know, a month or so before that election, if we were able to get it on, set up a public forum.
And people like you to speak for your.
We could give, I mean, all five of us have opinions about it.
I don't know what different kinds of guns, bump stocks, what is that thing called with all those.
Yeah, that's one thing.
Where somebody can come in and shoot within 10 seconds 20 bullets or something. Are we talking about, that's fine, that's, we don't need to discuss it now, but that's what I think a forum discussion needs to get into, without fisticuffs, without getting angry, just clarification for, especially for those of us who really don't know much about guns.
Mm-hmm, and that's where a lot of the problem is, is there's a lot of people that just don't know what these guns are.
Stand up.
I, as I told you at, at the town meeting, I've got a letter from Peter Welch and he signed it. He wrote me a note back. I asked him, because there was a bill in Washington, about 500 guns that were going to be banned because they were assault weapons. I have four of them in my house, they're three are bolt action, one's a pump and they're all hunting rifles. He had listed automatic rifles which have been banned since the 50s. They have been banned forever it seems like. And that's what people don't understand, the alleged AR-15 is an arm light rifle, that's all it is, a 223 caliber that is a hunting gun too.
Okay.
But that's what I was getting at.
You just said that there have been some guns that have been banned.
Yeah.
So what's our position in Clarence?
I asked Peter.
Are we going, excuse me, are we going to accept that ban or as part of your statement of sanctuary, does that mean that that ban no longer affects you and me?
Well, that's what it says on the, on the petition.
But the whole thing is.
What you gotta say, uh, as far as Peter Welch was concerned, he wrote back and said, you're right, we have to deci- decide and, and put a definition of what's an assault weapon.
Well, that's, that's, that's one thing, but are you, you are suggesting that this town, even if we're a sanctuary, would accept a ban coming from the federal government?
If it's a federal law, we have no choice.
That's right. See, this is non-binding, which is a small community.
That's why we think this non-binding vote was.
U.S. kind of thing, but we are, we are just trying to let our, as I said before, representatives, state and house representatives, this is how we feel here. But you folks are coming here tonight, meaning that not all of us feel this way, so then we have resolution to that by, uh, we can go in another route, Gloria has.
She'll give you the information.
Yeah, and then we can go from there.
And I don't see any of us getting into fights, that's just, you know, we can have a good discussion like we're having tonight without getting into fights, so, and yelling and stuff, but, um.
Can't do a fight the other night, did we?
No, we didn't, we had a good discussion, I thought it was great.
All right.
Well, I want to thank you for listening and, uh, understanding what.
Yeah, hey, it's nice to see this many people out here, usually it's three.
Yeah.
I know, I've watched a lot of your videos.
You know, we keep putting it on, you know, come and see us, we're here.
And they're dying.
We can put more chairs in here.
Any more comments?
Yeah, I got one. They, are, yeah.
As a, as a gun owner, I get a lot of guns and stuff and I, I've hunted and fished all my life and I don't expect the town of Clarence to just, uh, not obey the federal laws.
We didn't.
Appreciate the town does, I think it's a, uh, just sends a message to Montpelier that recognizes my rights as a gun owner. You know, I don't expect you guys to stop, you know, what the federal government's doing.
Well, I think in our small community right now, look, it's a back and forth conversation. And I think that, um, I think Jan, I think you mentioned this, that maybe you didn't know that much about guns or weapons and whatever, but there's some folks.
That knew.
I don't know what.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm concerned that I don't want our leaders to all of a sudden cut the legs out from others.
I will say this, every single gun law that I've ever read, to me, has one component and that is the safety of people of my state. No one's gonna come to your house and take your guns away.
You're not kidding.
That's right.
Unless you are convicted of certain crimes.
Right, yes.
It's, it's a truly, it's a safety thing, that's, that's it. And I, and I, I think.
It's very.
Is there not legislation to lock up guns though?
People, um, we know that there are people here on, on the, that have guns in their house loaded, you said that on the thing.
Over 30 years and it's never gone off by itself.
Wait, but who's to say someone can't come in your house and take it?
Well, they gotta find it, they gotta find it.
I can't go.
Well, if you come to my house, it's all locked in a gun sack.
And that's how it should be.
And, and that's because, you know, I had four children.
Exactly.
Over the years, so.
Being a police officer, safety is by far my greatest issue, so my guns are safe.
Rick, an answer to our discussion the other night, there have been 47 mass shootings since January 1st.
And, and it took a person to pull that trigger.
I'm sorry?
It took a person to pull that trigger and every one of them, the gun didn't go off by itself.
Right.
So.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I think the only thing I'd like to say before this ends is people.
Somebody had to pull the trigger.
Pro-gun.
It is not, I agree.
Against-gun, whatever.
I agree.
Sit down and educate yourselves what them weapons are.
Mm-hmm.
And know what they do and the dangers and the good to them.
People who are doing these mass shootings know very well what those guns are doing.
You know, and just get out and do it.
They're really good at it.
And they don't give a damn about gun laws, not one of them do.
No, no, them people don't.
Move it along.
It's move along.
It's time to move on.
Thank you folks for coming down, appreciate it. All right, nothing under old business, new business, uh, zoning administrator assistant. What did we, thank you folks, what did we, uh, Katie, did we have a letter back yet?
What's that? Oh, no, um, we did not send the letter out because we need to clarify whether we should be putting a posting out that we're accepting like applications to be an assistant.
Um, so we have to first decide to post it ultimately, cause we have not decided to post it.
Right.
That's right.
So I guess the question is, are we deciding to post it?
I didn't think it was fair to send a letter to just one person, I think it should be open to the public to have a resume.
I agree with it. You wanna be a?
Merge.
Yes, March.
Do you need to explain the new position?
Negative.
That's, well, that's what, so, so there was some discussion surrounding zoning administrator, um, and in that discussion, um, there was some different things that came up, there were some confusion, the, about appointments and when terms were up, Jeff didn't even realize he'd been reappointed a year ago. Um, and his suggestion was if the town wanted to do anything with, um, with regard to the zoning administrator, that basically if we wanted a person to get their feet wet, so to speak, we should appoint an assistant or an alternate zoning administrator. We do not currently have the, um, position. The other thing that I think becomes a, an issue is we currently don't have a budget for an alternate or an assistant zoning administrator, so anybody we appoint is gonna come out of the zoning administrator budget and I think that zoning administrator budget's right down probably pretty close to what he needs for the year to, to do his job. So if we're going to do it, it's gotta come from someplace else. Now, I can't imagine that person is going to make, I mean, our zoning administrator budget's only $2,000, so that person's not gonna make much money. So, you know, if we want to do this and based on, I don't want to read too much into, I, I know we didn't point blank ask the zoning administrator, but he, to me, in our discussion, and I know it was, what, last meeting, um, at least when we were over there, alluded to the fact that he was open to having an assistant.
Right, because he's.
Cause.
Because of his life changes.
Correct.
Uh, may not give him the full three years and if there were someone within the community, And if there were someone within the community, especially for me, anyway, that was interested, he could take time to, uh, have that person serve as a, uh, alternate and, um, train that person.
So, I mean, I guess the question is, you know, where, how we're gonna do that, if we, if we are gonna do it, or do we wait? I mean, you're talking another budget cycle. So, you know, where, where do we want to go with this? I, I don't know as if I see that right now personally, unless the zoning administrator came to us and said, "I have a date that I want to get done", I, I don't see the justification for even throwing a few dollars at it and creating it. That's just me. I'm just sitting here. I, that's me.
Oh.
Doesn't the, the, um, the zone, the, the, um, zoning administrator, doesn't he report to the-
Planning Commission.
Is it the Planning Commission or the Board of Adjustment? The Planning Commission?
I'll be the Planning.
Yeah.
Planning Commission.
Technically, it's Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Okay, but when there's-
But if there's a, if there's an appeal, he will-
Appeal.
Correct.
Or he's violating, they're, they're not adhering to-
He can offer him-
zoning, then he goes to the Board of Adjustment.
Correct.
And, I mean, there's a lot of talent on the Board of Adjustment, as I understand. So if somebody had to come in green, for instance, he can get a lot of, he or she could get a lot of information from, from those folks.
That's sure.
And, I mean, the, I think the, the zoning regulations are fairly straightforward, too, as to what you gotta do.
So personally, that's where I'm at right now, which is why when there was some back and forth about what this letter should say to, because, so, full disclosure, so everybody knows, the, the Planning Commission believed that the zoning administrator was up. So they were making a recommendation to us, um, for who should be zoning administrator.
Oh.
And it was a different person. But the reality is, our zoning administrator's not up. So it's, it's, it was kind of, it was a null and void type request. And which is why, when we had discussion, I said that basically the letter, the return letter kinda needed to say that. We don't have a vacancy right now. Um, the next vacancy is 2022? 2022, because it was just re-upped in 2019. So I just said, reply and say there's not a vacancy right now, and, and, and be done with it. That's, that's my, I, I mean, having thought about it since our last meeting.
Right.
I, I did some thinking because, um, that's just, and again, I don't know what, um, what, you know, the rest of the board's opinion is. Um, our public appears to have cleared out, so we don't have any opinions from the public, so.
Some of us do what?
Just a few of you.
As far as I'm concerned, um, there's a $2,000 limit. How much is left in this year's?
Um, you have a budget status in the packet in front of you.
Let me just say, I, I don't think there'd be any detrimental impact on, on, uh, development if you had to bring in somebody green. I don't think it would-
You mean, in the short term? So if it, if it was something that happened immediately, you don't think there'd be a problem?
No.
Yeah, which I can-
I think you're coming to the same conclusion.
That's kinda what my thought was.
The EA budget has a little under $800 left to get through June.
Correct. And we're going into permit time, probably, in reality.
Yeah. Don't think-
So, I mean, I'm not hearing much other, so I guess I'll go ahead and make the motion that our letter simply respond and say we don't have an opening until 2022. Um,
To the CPC?
I think we need to send it to the CPC, and I would say the individual also needs to be responded to, to state that we don't have an opening, so. Cause was there a letter from that individual or not?
No.
It was just from the CPC?
Yeah.
Okay, so don't send one to the individual. Send it straight to the CPC and state-
Who's the CPC?
Planning, Planning Commission.
Oh.
Um.
Gotta get all this thing going down.
So I would send it to the Planning Commission and just state, "We don't have an opening until 2022. We will keep your-"
Recommendation.
Recommendation on file for the future. I, I mean-
Okay.
I'll start with something like that.
All right, for discussion, uh,
For discussion.
Yeah. I think what's gonna happen is all of a sudden, out of the blue, we won't have a zoning administrator, and we won't have someone to train. Uh, if I had, Art, you got any comments? But that's my opinion.
I think the zoning administrator, though, in response to you, I think he made it very clear that if he does get done, he's going to give you a window of time before he does. I don't think he's gonna walk in tomorrow, and I, I did not get the impression that he's gonna walk in in a month and say, "Peace out, I'm gone."
Okay, well-
I didn't get that impression. I don't know, you, did you, did you walk away with that impression?
I, no, I, the impression I got was that he was very proactive about training somebody because he thinks that he's not gonna be here. And so, given-
Okay, so-
That is my thinking, but we, we can have a vote here and-
So, yeah, so what I would recommend is, we'll call the motion, and then I've got another motion to make.
Okay, so we'll, all those in favor of not, or, or, or of Robbie's motion, I say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
No? So, so a three to two. All right, so that motion carried.
I'll make a motion now that the Clarendon Select Board write a letter to the zoning administrator, um, requesting a response in writing as to, per our discussion of, I forget what the date was. Katie, you probably can look at the date up. It was a meeting ago or whatever. Per our discussion of that meeting, um, are you formally, uh, how do we want to word it? Are you form, would you formally request that there be an assistant? The Select Board seeking clarification on our conversation.
They're second for discussion.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
Because right now, we have nothing-
In writing.
In writing.
That's right.
From that conversation.
I would be in favor of that.
So you're asking just for a response, is he looking, is, based on that discussion, is he requesting an assistant? And if he's requesting an assistant, we come back and we, we revisit this.
That's a, that's a take I got from him.
You think he was requesting?
Down the road, in six months, he wants to start working somebody in.
Okay, so-
That was my-
So we're asking for clarification in writing. I mean, that's, that's my, and, and we can fine tune it, and Katie can shoot us a draft, and we can get it so it says what we want it to say, but I think that you're just asking for it in writing.
Okay. And are you agreeing?
Yeah.
Because you seconded our motion.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Everybody understands the motion?
Well, I think-
Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Yeah, well-
Nobody's opposed.
I'll give the opinion.
I'll force.
But the, the, the point you should make clear to him is that if he's formally requesting, what you've got is a budget of $2,000 to work on. So-
Well, that could be in that letter.
How is he, how does he feel the best way to manage that $2,000?
Brought to my attention. Are you ready to?
I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, okay.
So the letter you were gonna send to the Planning, Planning Commission, you'd wanna wait on that before you get Jeff's-
Response?
Response, wouldn't you, or, because we're gonna say there's no opening right now?
We want clarification of what the Plan, Planning Commission is-
I don't think you have to, because we're stating a fact to them.
Oh.
I mean, you're stating a fact that there's not an opening.
Maybe if Jeff wrote back and said to you, "Yes, I want one now."
Well, let's put it this way, if he writes back and says that he wants an assistant, there's gonna be some, have to be some meetings with him, and there's gonna have to be some things ironed out to work out those details.
Right, and then we, we started discussing that, like, instead of two people going, one person would, cause he, if you recall in the conversation, said that he's very busy, and he has all these other towns. Doesn't look like Clarendon is going to be that-
Is he?
Busy and all that stuff. So, um, you know, I want it in writing. I think Robbie has a good point. And so let's see where it goes, as far as that's concerned. Anything else under zoning administrative assistant? Uh, Heidi, report.
I have provided you with the current budget status through this afternoon. Um, I heard you- And I did have copies up available to the public on the table, um, over next to William, if anybody is curious. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Gloria? I remembered you were hiding behind it.
I am.
Art, you're not a Lister anymore. Katie, do I?
Um, if we could just, well, we don't have, like, in the minutes that we approve the Select Board warrants. So if we could go through that motion, so I can type that we did it. I don't, you don't have to motion anything, I just want to make sure of that.
He, he just said they were floating and drifting.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, that, that's the okay part of it. Anything else, Katie?
No, that's it.
All right, Rick, start, you're in. Anything?
I'll add a question.
Trying not to look like that.
She's trying to ignore me here. Um, technically, this meeting, you guys were in violation of the open meeting law for this meeting.
This meeting?
Yeah. The, one of the things under Title I is that the, um, the agenda must be posted 48 hours before the meeting on our website. And if you have a website, we have a website. We've defined that as our website, and it's a way to communicate to people. I mean, it gets back again to these folks that were here on the Second Amendment. That, um, you know, it's a way to alert, "Hey, this is on the agenda. If you have a comment or want to talk about it, come on." Now, I understand there are problems with the website to get the information or-
Just to get the agenda up.
The agenda up.
There was a glitch in it. It was on there today, but it wouldn't let me do it, so I said it.
And there was a glitch at the last meeting as well, I think, wasn't there? Remember calling, there wasn't- Yeah, to get the agenda up, it wasn't on, and I got a copy of it from, from Katie. So, uh, I mean, I think it's your responsibility, the board's responsibility, to make sure you're complying with, especially the open meeting law, to get that done. Um, you should really focus, if there needs to be something done with that website, then you guys gonna have, may have to put some resources into that to comply. You gotta comply with the open meeting law.
There's, now, I, I think if you read the fine print in the open meeting law, if you have, uh, you have a place to post, and you, and if you have a, uh, computer in town, then it has to be on a computer as well. But if there's something where the computer's broke down or whatever, and you can't do it, I mean, we're not the only town that went through this. Wallingford has gone through this once or twice. Um, Rutland Town, where the computer wasn't, uh, doing what it's supposed to be doing. So, 'cause I called around and asked.
So, I guess the question is to, to Gloria, and I know, Art, you know more about it, too. Do we need to put something into our website at this point to upgrade something, or where do we stand with, or do we think it was just a fluke?
For me, it was just a glitch, because I asked for help and he put it on the website for me.
Okay.
I got the help.
So it was kind of a fluke thing, then?
And a couple of years ago, I don't know if you remember, I got quotes for new websites.
Yeah. Oh, they're unbelievable.
Thousands of dollars, and to maintain them.
But I, I was curious. I, I was unaware there was an issue, so I, I didn't know that it wasn't even up, so, because I know it's, it has been up.
Rare, but-
First I heard of it, too.
Well, somebody on the board, I would think, should at least check the website and see if, you know, make sure you're complying.
But in all fairness, what I would say to that was, if we have something that's uncontrollable by us, i.e. in a glitch, and it, we inadvertently violate-
You have, I mean, if you couldn't-
What do you do?
If you couldn't post the minute, I mean, you can at least post something on the website, right? Say, "Hey, the minutes aren't on the website. Please come on down, and, uh, we're sorry about it. There's an issue. We've got it here."
So our, our warning, our, our agenda was posted in the normal locations, though, right?
It was.
By, in time. Okay, good.
And it was on the-
Knowing electronics, I've been in electronics a long time.
Transfer station, Loretta's, and what's the, post office?
Post office is here.
But the law specifically says, if you have a website, it's gotta be posted on the website for-
I understand that.
But it also speaks to, keep reading the law. You're gonna find out where it says something about, uh, there's, I can't remember the term they use, but if it's, to use Gloria's term, or glitch, then it's, it's not against the law as long as you, uh, acknowledge and then repair.
I, I don't find that.
Well-
I don't see this. I got it. It's Title I.
When we had the open meeting law down at the Grange Hall that time, there was questions about that because we were then just getting started on having our, uh, site available. So those questions were asked, but the, the, the individual that was answering all those questions said that if you have-
What individual was this?
I can't remember the-
From the state of her mother.
Yeah, it was two, two people.
Was that that training that John set up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And-
Well, I, I would agree, it kinda makes sense, but the law is, as the law reads, that if you have a website, it's gotta be posted on it. And if you can't get it on there, then, then just say, "Hey, it's, can't get onto the website", and, uh, you know, "Come on down to the town office."
See our literal posting.
Gloria's behalf, though, this is never, I mean, it, it doesn't happen.
No.
By Friday, she's got that agenda up, and when you have an accident, you know, the, the computer goes-
No, I realize, yeah.
Well, if we're gonna break the law, then we'll just shut the thing down.
Well, maybe that's the thing if you gotta do, if it's not worth it.
But for the 95% of the time that it's up and running, it's helpful. But, you know, if you have an issue that's beyond our control, what do we do? Shut it down?
I just said, you could go ahead and say, "Hey, it's not on the website. We have an issue."
Call Leach and keep me down.
You know, if you want it, you gotta come to the town hall or get a hold of Katie. I mean, that's what I did. I know enough to do it.
I have an email to them.
But these folks, for instance, these folks that were here, they, they were, had the issue with the Second Amendment, because- One is, it wasn't, it wasn't posted. It wasn't on the agenda. And even if it was on the agenda for this meeting, they wouldn't have known it anyways.
So I guess I don't hear your solution for that.
And I'm saying, my solution is, if you can't get it on the website, put something at least where the agenda cannot be posted. Post a notice on the website.
My question is, where do we put it? What do you have? If the computer is not working-
No, no, no. She had a problem with posting the, the agenda on the website.
Saying, "I couldn't get the agenda up. Here's the agenda," or something comes along.
Even still.
Yeah.
If we can't get it on, what do we do?
So you, you, but you can post other notices onto the website.
Hey, hold it out.
You have a question?
Yeah.
But what if you can't?
The problem today is we rely too much on social media. That's why they have alternate sites. I don't go on the page. If I want to see something-
Individual.
I come down here. I know people that do not use a computer in town, that are older, that go to Loretta's, and they look at the posting on the board. They don't want to look at it. They don't want the technology. Granted, okay, it didn't make it. Life, life will go on. And things, things will get corrected. But you have glitches. Even your home computer has glitches. I, mine has glitches.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, at least give some kind of a heads up that says, and if you can post onto the website, post a little notice onto the website, says, "We can't get the minute, we can't get the agenda on the website." You're gonna have to either go to where it's posted or-
Thank Christ, I got a 15-year-old.
Yeah, exactly.
There he is.
All right, do you have any concerns, Rick?
I don't.
Rob?
Oh, thank you, Cash, for the efforts that you-
Yeah.
Put into the Middle Road today, and also South Creek Road, and I know that you got an uphill battle on potholes and everything else, so keep up the good work.
I don't have anything.
Just to follow up on the brush fire they had today, the fire department, that it's dry out there. Hopefully we'll get some rain, green up a little bit, so.
All right.
Yep.
I have not noticed, has Cash's job been posted? Yep.
Oh, yeah, the next day it was.
It was?
So we deal with, so we need to deal with that next week.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And they should put a date on it, too, so.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, and then we-
We can deal with it next meeting.
Then we deal with the other, uh, appointments, because I know Katie's been calling around-
Yes.
Getting some, we deal with them next meeting as well.
Yep.
Yep.
It'll be on agenda.
Yep, right. Other than, uh, that, Cash is doing a good job, and, uh, that's all I got.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?